Public hearings.
So, good afternoon. We're streaming on 22. We're also streaming on YouTube. Phone lines are open. You are being recorded. You may begin your meeting.
Beautiful. Thank you, Matt. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Meeting of Thursday, May 15, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Leece.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Callie Dean.
Present.
Supervising board comes on.
Present. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have three public hearings, and that'll be followed by public portion and then resolutions. We ask you during public portion and the public hearings to kindly keep your comments to three minutes. But before we start, we've got Hugh King here, who's gonna razzle-dazzle us.
Hi, I'm the town historian, as most of you know. In our continuing saga of police chief, I want to talk about William Jacobs tonight. East Hampton Town has a new Chief of Police. The town board met yesterday and appointed William Charles Jacobs, 46, who has served as a patrolman for the past 13 years on the town police force and has been acting Chief of Police while Chief Harry Steele was on vacation, until Mr. Steele resigned on November 1st. The present town police force was created in 1940, and Harry Steele was the first chief. Now, when Mr. Jacobs took over, there are about a dozen people on the force, three cars in use, and Montauk alone could use a dozen patrolmen. I guess there weren't patrolmen going to Montauk. So Jacobs also was a member of the Star of the East Lodge, the Masons, the American Legion, the Saugus Fire Department, the Montauk Coast Company, and he also served in World War II. Okay, that's about all I could find on him. There's not a lot, but I have another story.
Okay.
Sheriff Howe discovers $50,000 still at Northwest Peach Farm. Angelo and Carmelo Crescioni and Joseph Bosco each held under $5,000 bail that still had a capacity of 500 gallons daily, one of the largest season on the island, thought to be owned by a bootleg ring. As all is not gold that glitters, and Sheriff Britton House men discovered that week that hen houses sometimes house other than hens. When they discovered a $50,000 still in a hen house at the Peach Farm at Northwest, which the county authorities allege is owned by and operated by Angelo and Carmelo Crescioni. On Tuesday, the county authorities descended upon the Peach Farm, which is in a secluded part, secluded spot at Northwest, far from Prying Eyes and within a short distance of Gardeners Bay Shore, where it's thought by the police that most of the alcohol shipments were made. The federal men were dismantled the still on Wednesday, estimated that still had a daily capacity of 500 gallons. But local residents have seen no traffic over the Northwest road. Well, of course, they come at night. They're not gonna see anything. Okay, they were held in $5,000 bail, and they were arraigned in Brooklyn. Here it goes. Ten huge vats of concrete and cement about 10 feet square and eight feet deep were inside the hen house, where the huge copper still was located. The entire layout was very well constructed, and the Treasury Department, who arrived on Wednesday to dismantle the hen house, still stated it was one of the largest they had ever worked on. From all outer appearance, the hen house was actually a hen house. But on approaching the building, the strong odor of brew indicated that a still was not far off. So before you repurpose that house, you better go in there and smell. Okay, that's my story. I'm gonna leave you with three words. Cranberry Hole Bridge.
Bye.
Thank you, Hugh. All right, Carol, if you could read the first meeting notice, please.
The public hearings will be held live and in person by the town board and will be available electronically by video and teleconferencing and will be televised on local TV, Channel 22, and available for live stream on the LTV website. The public shall be permitted to hear, appear in person, but may also provide comments on the matter by being heard by calling 351-888-6331. Any person or party wishing to be heard with respect to the foregoing may do so in person, by agent, by attorney, or by written comment addressed to the East Hampton Town Clerk, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton. Comments may also be submitted to the town clerk by email to cbrannan@ehamptonny.gov. All comments must be received by the town clerk by the date and time of the public hearing. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes and for updated information. Please take notice that the town board hereby directs that a public hearing shall be held on May 15 at 6:00 PM or sooner after, as this matter may be heard, at East Hampton Town Hall, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, to hear any and all persons either for or against a local law entitled, a local law providing for the amendment of Chapter 255 Taxation of the Town Code of the Town of East Hampton to add Article 9 exemption for East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue and Auxiliary Squad.
Thank you, Carol. Does anyone here like to address the board on this matter? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
No, we have no callers at this time.
Question to close?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could please read the second meeting notice.
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York and provisions of the East Hampton Town Code, the town board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, May 15, at 6:00 PM or sooner after, as this matter may be heard concerning the filing grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Bendigo Beach LLC to scenic and conservation easement dated April 1, 2025, at 2 Bendigo Road in Amagansett, Suffolk County Tax Map 300, 152, 111.1. And the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Thank you, Carol. Would anyone like to address the board on this matter? Matthew, is there anyone on the line for this public hearing?
We have no callers at this time.
Question to close?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Carol, if you could please read the last meeting notice.
Please take notice that pursuant to Section 247 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York and the provisions of the East Hampton Town Code, the town board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in Town Hall Meeting Room, 159 Panago Road, East Hampton, on Thursday, May 15, at 6:00 PM or sooner after, as this matter may be heard concerning the filing grant of scenic and conservation easement to the Town of East Hampton. The grantor is Jason and Ashley Libeth. It's a scenic and conservation easement dated March 31 of '25. The location is 15 Bay Inlet Road in Springs, Suffolk County Tax Map 323-29, and the reviewing agency is the ZBA.
Thank you, Carol. Would anyone like to make a comment on this public hearing? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers at this time.
Question to close?
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to public portion. Carol, has anyone signed up? Thank you. Conrad, welcome.
How you doing? My name is Conrad Mosicano. I've lived in this town. Next month will be 28 years. My question is, I guess, for Dave. He's in charge of the recreational part of whatever. My concern is the one-wall court at the spring school. There's a one-wall handball court, you wanna call it. I'm down there every day drilling. I play racquetball. I use that court to drill and to get better at my sport. And the wall itself is in great shape. It's the playing surface of that court that is a horror show. And I was wondering if somehow that that can be resurfaced.
Well, we'll review it.
Yeah.
I saw you there yesterday, actually.
What's that?
I saw you there yesterday playing.
Yeah, I mean, there's other people. I mean, I see lacrosse players down there drilling. Tennis players are down there drilling. The whole court itself does not have to be resurfaced, only the playing, the actual court where we play on, which is 20 wide by 34 deep on both sides. And I think it comes to like 700 and something square feet. So, and when they first did that court, instead of painting lines, they, I don't know what they did. But it's creating more court hinders than, than whatever. But yeah, if they can somehow resurface that court, and I don't think it would take that much money, and I'm willing to donate if that's the case. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Conrad.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Matthew, is there anyone on the line?
We have no callers.
All right, so we're gonna move on then to resolutions. Tom, if you wanna start us off.
Absolutely. I will start with Resolution 2025-724. This is approval of claims and warrant number 5B in the amount of $3,856,817.94 and $40,826.67, respectively.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Could you just pull your microphone a little bit closer?
Sure. Next is Resolution 2025-725. This is to reject bid EH25018 for kitchen uniforms and smallwares.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I'm happy to offer Resolution 2025-726. This is to appoint seasonal employees in Parks Department from May 2025, effective May 17, 2025, demes positions and pay scales below.
Second. All in favor.
Aye. 727 is a budget modification in the Highway Department, where we're bringing $30,000 for full-time salaries to the budget line for subcontractor costs in the same amount.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
728 is authorized a CPF land acquisition for 351 Oldstone Highway. Propelled owner is Jerry Keeler and Peter Keeler, Tax Map 300, S83-6-5. The purchase price is $1.75 million.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
729 is retain L.K. McLean Associates for professional engineering services for Westlake Dock renovation. And this is the submitted, they submitted proposal December 31, 2024, for construction administration lump sum, not to exceed $24,000 in construction inspection, not to exceed $80,640, totaling $104,640.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
730 is the transfer of park and reserve funds and budget modification for the Highway Department, where we're bringing the transfer $99 from the payment in lieu of parking fund for striping.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
731 is amend Resolution 2025-495. This is resolved that Resolution 2025-495 is hereby amended to correct the invoice amount of $1,000, sorry, $1,525.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
732 is authorize an application for an AED grant program and is from AED buy-down grant program.
Second. All in favor.
Move for discussion, this could make. I just think it would be a great addition to actually have the location of all the town AEDs listed on the town website for people to actually know where to go to find one in the event of an emergency.
I'll take offline with this.
Okay.
So I have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
733 is a notice of bidders for EH25-025. This is mule utility vehicle for lifeguards. The bid is available May 22, 2025, and the bid is due back June 12, 2025. Please contact the purchasing department if you have any questions.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
2025-734 is a notice of bidders for P6 portable pumps for Marine Patrol. The bid is available May 22, 2025, and due back June 5, 2025. Please contact our purchasing department with any questions.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
735 is a set bid EH25-017. This is the annual contract cesspool and tank pumping services for 2025 for Quack and Bush Cesspools Incorporated.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
736 is a set bid EH24-048. This is the Westlake Dock Repairs, Keith Grimes Incorporated, for a total cost of $1,799,999,070.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
737 is a set bid EH24-047. This is purchase to install a new fire pump on marine vessel rebid to Emergency Mechanical Service Incorporated in the amount of $137,602.72.
Second. All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 738, which is a notice of public hearing to accept a scenic easement or urban renewal map, URP 61, and UR map EH28. This public hearing will be held on June 5 at 6:00 PM. The grantor is Dina L. Zwinger as trustee of the Dina L. Zwinger Revocable Trust. The location is 2 Medford Avenue, East Hampton.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Next, I have Resolution 739, and this is to authorize payment of a 2024 census invoice for the Building Department in the amount of $29.04.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
740 is to accept the road widening easement, URP 61, and EH2A, and the grantor is Dina Zwinger, trustee of the Dina Zwinger Revocable Trust, 2 Malfred Avenue. This is a road widening easement.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 741 is to amend Resolution 2025-564. Resolve that that resolution be amended to show the corrected address of 31 Seventh Street.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 742 is to release security for urban renewal parcel two in EH11. The current applicant is Anna Gabriella Romo Soto. The address is 5 Central Avenue, and the amount is $9,900.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 473 is approval of various special events in May and June. First is the Springs Improvement Society Farmers Market that will take place at Ashwell Hall, Saturdays 5/17 through 9/27, 2025, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturdays. Next is the Montauk Chamber of Commerce, Montauk Farmers Market. This takes place on the Montauk Green. Thursdays 5/22 through 9/11, 5/22, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Fridays, Fridays 9/19 through 10/3, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, which is three Fridays. And Saturday, October 11 and October 12, 9 to 2, is part of the Fall Fest. And next is the Amagansett Farmers Market. This takes place at the Amagansett Square. Thursdays 5/22 through 10/30, at 3:30 to 6:00 PM. That's 24 Thursdays. Next is Surf Lodge Permit 1 of 6 for their Sloan Kettering Event at the Surf Lodge in Montauk, Saturday 5/24, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Next is Surf Lodge Permit 2 of 6, Montauk Chamber of Commerce Event at the Surf Lodge in Montauk, Saturday 5/31, 25, 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. The next is Montauk Historic Society for the VIP Exhibition, opening at Second House in Montauk, Saturday 5/25, 4 to 6:00 PM. Next is the Old Montauk Athletic Club, 9th Annual Montauk Mile, starting at Montauk Firehouse along South Edgemere Street, ending in Montauk Brewing Company. That's on Saturday, June, I'm sorry, Sunday, June 1, 9 to 2:00 PM. Next is the Montauk Sports, 44th Annual RJA Memorial Mighty Montauk Triathlon Swim, Bike, Run, Westlake Drive and Star Island Road, Montauk, Saturday, June 7, 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And finally, at the East Hampton Point Resort and Marina in Springs, the APE League, League Week 4 Volleyball Tournament at the East Hampton Point Resort and Marina, 6:21 from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, and Sunday, 6:22, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 744 is the approval of East End Surf Club Surf Lessons Seasonal Permit for 2025. All of the conditions are listed below.
Second.
Discussion. Can I just, I see an asterisk. Is that to come after? That is for when we're talking about, first, we have the breakdown, 10 people at any one time for one of their operations. The other is their children's group lessons, two to one only. But even though it's two to one and one to one, at any one time, the maximum number of students instructors in the water is not to exceed 21.
And that is a reduction on last year's number, correct?
10 of 10 people.
And has that been communicated to the operators?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 475 is to amend Resolution 2025-711, approval of Corey's Wave for their special event permit. And this was Resolution 2025-711, was adopted on 5/6. And there, we need to make one change. No more than 15 people total at any one time. That's 10 students and five instructors.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 746 is the approval of Montauk Music Festival Special Event Permit, 2025. And the full list of conditions, times, and days are listed below.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 747, this is the schedule and notice of public hearing for the Parsons Dodge Homestead Management Plan for Thursday, June 5, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 748, this is to approve 2025 scholarships for the Town Summer Recreation Program at Spring School. This is to waive the town's fee for up to seven full-day scholarships for the town's 2025 summer program at Spring School.
Second, but move for discussion. I just think this is something we should extend to all school districts, number one. And number two, I think if we're gonna have this resolution, should we actually state what the cost is to the town?
Okay, so we've been doing this for over a decade. The reason we do it at the spring school, we used to do it at the Montauk School when the town ran a program there. Generally speaking, when we run a summer program at the spring school, it's spring's kids who attend it. Do you know what I mean? It's not kids from other districts coming to the spring school.
I know of some Montauk kids who do go to that.
Come to the spring school.
Yeah.
Okay, it was.
I would say, let's move with this, and we'll just.
Sure, exactly. That's what I'm saying, gonna reach out to the other districts, see if there's a need.
Yeah, because Montauk runs a program, doesn't it? Doesn't Montauk run a summer program?
Montauk has a summer school program, yes, but it's not sports-based. It's more kind of sit in a classroom, play cards, etc.
Got it. So we have a second. All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 749, this is to authorize attendance for New York State Association of Tax Receivers and Collectors Conference in Lake George, New York, for Christine Schnell from June 8 to June 11, 2025, in an amount not to exceed $1,475.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 750, this is to authorize a survey by George Wallbridge, where 50 Thomas Avenue is in the town's Affordable Home Ownership Program and requires an updated survey. The town board has hereby approved George Wallbridge to provide an updated survey in the amount not to exceed $800.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 751, this is to authorize an appraisal at 326 Acabonic Road. This property is in the town's Affordable Home Ownership Program and requires an appraisal in the amount not to exceed $600.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 752, this is to refund, refund permit in the amount of $125 for a duplicate recycling permit.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 753 is to issue a check to Bonic Tax Reduction Services, Service to Award of Costs Small Claims Assessment Review. The Supreme Court of New York, the State of New York awarded to Bonic Tax Reduction Service, Award of Costs for Small Claims Assessment Review, and the amount, and they're, sorry, be it resolved, the Bookkeeping Department is hereby directed to issue a check to Bonic Tax Reduction Service in the amount of $120 for the payment of the award.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-754 is to appoint seasonal traffic control officers, effective May 15, 2025.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
755 is to appoint full-time custodial worker one at the East Hampton Town Airport, Luis Vera, at the hourly rate of $24.94 for an annual salary of $51,883.73 for a 40-hour work week, retroactive to May 12.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
756 is to appoint part-time assistant town attorney, Trevor M. Darrell, at the annual rate of $32,500 prorated to date of hire for a 10-hour per-week schedule, effective May 19, 2025.
Second.
And I just wanted to disclose that Trevor is our family attorney, but I'm comfortable voting on this.
And I had disclosed the same thing also.
So all in favor.
Aye.
757 is a list appointment and promotion to accountant trainee for Giseth Pacheco. And this is, Giseth is hereby promoted to the full-time position of accountant trainee in the Finance Department at the hourly rate of $31.69 for an annual salary of $65,918.11 for a 40-hour work week, effective, retroactive to May 12.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 758 is to promote Kenneth Alversa to Police Lieutenant in the East Hampton Town Police Department. The Suffolk County Department of Human Services Personnel and Civil Service has given an examination for lieutenant, and Kenneth Alversa is reachable on said list. And whereas Chief Sarlo has presented a recommendation to the town board to promote Kenneth Alversa to the position of Police Lieutenant, and whereas the town board has discussed this promotion and supports the recommendation of Chief Sarlo, Kenneth Alversa being is hereby appointed to the position of Police Lieutenant in the East Hampton Town Police Department at the annual salary of $187,356.83, effective May 18, 2025. And I just wanna say, congratulations, Lieutenant Alversa. Well deserved.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 759 is a status, status change from part-time to seasonal police officers in the East Hampton Town Police Department, effective May 15.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
760 is a status change from part-time to seasonal harbor masters in Marine Patrol, effective May 15.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
761 is a notice to bidders EH25-026, self-mailing newsletter for the Town of East Hampton. The bid is available May 15 and due back May 29.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
762 is to accept bid, bid EH24-040, communication building renovation. This goes to Long Island Craftsmanship, Craftsmanship, Inc., in the total cost of $585,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
763 is to accept bid EH25007, and this is for the 403 Abraham's Path Property Demolition to Deuceon, Inc., doing business as AMCS Environmental, for the total cost of $158,888.28.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
764 is to accept a donation for backyard composting program and budget modification. The Town of East Hampton is desirous of creating a residential composting program for town residents by providing receptacles on a first-come, first-served basis and hosting a website for residents to request and obtain set-up receptacles. The town is able to piggyback off the Town of Hempstead contract for products and services provided by the Brand Builders LLC. Councilmember Kate Rogers wishes to donate $325 to the town for year one of the program and resolve that the town graciously accepts this donation.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thanks, Kate.
765 is to amend Resolution 2025-549, fund line, fund line bonds. So we authorize the issuance of bonds in the amount of $175,000 to finance the construction of police building improvements at the Panago Road location. We just need to correct the appropriate fund designation. It'll be the town's general fund, townwide.
Second.
We need a roll call for this, Carol? All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 766 is to accept a donation of a boulder and plaque for 66 Waynescott Main Street from Andrew Saban in honor of the Ronald S. Lauder family to be placed at a pre-designated location on the town-owned property.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
And we thank Mr. Saban and the Lauder family for this effort. Resolution 767 is to retain Law Office of Vincent Toomey for PBA matters for 2025, constituting a total of $100,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
768 is to increase the cap for Devitt Spellman Barrett, LLP, Ellis versus the Town of East Hampton, 2025, and this constitutes a total of $20,000 for the calendar year.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
So we actually set a record today. We don't have additional resolutions after deadline. We made Carol's job easier. Does that? Does anyone have anything they need to bring up?
Yeah, board, this is Matthew, LTV. Just, I just want to let you know for transparency, after the public portion of the meeting was ended, we do have a couple of callers on the line. They may have called in just to listen, but I just want to make you aware and acknowledge that we have a couple callers on the line.
Okay. You know what? Are they still on?
Yes, they are.
So what can, Carol, can I open up public portion again? I'm going to open up public portion again. Matthew, so let's put our first caller through.
Okay. Caller.
But then you can, it looks like you've already taken the phone number down.
It's down, but the phone lines are still open.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to unmute caller with phone number ending in 5659.
Hi, good evening. My name is Helene Fallon, and I'm actually calling in because I just heard that you guys were voting tonight on cutting back the size of the programs for the East End Surf Club. And I've lived here for generations. I've, my kids were born and raised here, and my son is one of the partners in East End Surf Club. And I'm actually calling because I'm quite shocked, and I pay attention all the time to the board meetings. I watch them all the time. And I was unaware that this was one of the proposals that were up for tonight's vote. And I'm just shocked because I'm sure that you've met, I hope that you've met Patrick and Mike and their team, and they hire multiple, in fact, all local kids that they train. They've trained to be instructors, to be ocean, just ocean experts, and many of them lifeguards. And I don't really understand what the purpose is. They give all of the local kids discounts, and if they reduce, if you guys reduce the size of the program, then they no longer are going to be able to give the discounts. They're going to have to lay off some of the kids that they're able to hire, our local kids. And I'd just like an explanation if that's something that would be typical as to why we were only notified today that this was happening. I'm just blown away that I listened to all of these special events, and there's so few that our local families and kids that were born and raised here, and they're putting their heart and soul into these programs. And I truly, I just don't understand it. And so I just needed to make that comment and with hope that maybe you guys will reconsider that.
Thank you for your comments. You can call in tomorrow to the town council office and ask for Deputy Supervisor Kate Rogers, and she can talk you through it.
Okay, okay, I'll do that. I'll be there tomorrow.
I can also give you the number for my office. I can give you the number right now if you'd like.
Uh, sure. Kate, yeah, I can take it down, sure. Do you want me to call you or you want me to come in?
No, you can give me a call. It's 631-324-2620.
Right? 2620. Okay, I look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Matthew, could you put the next caller through?
Okay, putting a caller with a phone number ending in 1117. I'm muting now.
Okay, Matthew, could you put the next caller through?
Okay, putting a caller with a phone number ending in 1117.
Caller, please mute your television.
Okay, putting a caller with a phone number ending in 1117.
All right, I'm going to try the next caller, phone number ending in 0863.
Good evening, Town Board. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. This is Chris Polley calling. I, like Helene, follow Town Board meetings, EBA meetings, quite carefully. And I too am surprised to hear that this resolution that allowed permitting for East End Surf Club was modified from last year. I don't quite understand why and why no notice was given and an opportunity to rebut or give reasons why that should not occur. We live at Ditch Plains Beach. We are at the beach every single day. That beach is in the best condition it's been in in probably 20 years. There is no way that this is impacting the public, given that the time that this event occurs is very limited. They are also way down the beach, far away from anybody. And they provide a service. They actually train our kids water safety. And now you're making it so that there are less kids that are going to get this training. And as Helene pointed out, they make a special effort to include local kids, particularly ones who can't afford it, so that they too get the benefit of this training. And this action, this resolution that was passed, that was modified, has a direct impact, a very negative direct impact. And I would ask that the board reconsider the resolution, reopen the resolution, and vote it as it was passed last year so that East End Surf Club can continue to provide this valuable service with no impact to the community other than a positive impact to the community. I thank you for listening to this. I hope that you will consider this. I have to say that no notice was given to anybody that I'm aware of. I'm certain that my son would have notified me had the notice been given, and I would have been on the phone with you, Kate, or Kathy, or anybody else to express my opinion on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, we'll try the, we'll try the next caller that we unmuted before. Caller 1117, please turn the volume down on your listening device, your television, before speaking. I'm going to unmute you now. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going? Could you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yep, okay. Hey, how's it going? Yeah, my name's Mike Polley. I've obviously been following the meeting today. I'm here with my partner, Pat Fallon, and we are the owners and operators of the East End Surf Club. We, you know, one, are a little bit blindsided by this. As Helene and my dad stated, we do pour our heart and fall into this. You know, me and Pat, our local kids who fell in love with surfing and threw our passion in the water, wanted to give it back to the community that we grew up in. Outside of the fact that, you know, of course, we like to give discounts to locals and facilitate as much, you know, facilitate as much local energy and just giving back to the community as much as we can while also trying to afford to stay in our community. You know, it's not been the easiest thing. Housing is of course an issue. The prices are of course an issue. All of it has been tough. But when we're dealing with issues of trying to keep locals here, what this directly does is pushes us further out. If we are, you know, scaled back in any way, it directly impacts our ability to make a living and life out here. And of course, that's going to fall into, you know, the community because we won't be able to give those discounts. We're going to have to cut local staff that we can't afford to pay anymore, who we do try to pay well. I mean, we've tried to do everything right, you know, we really have. We operate our camp an hour where the beach is really not crowded. I mean, me and Pat, growing up on this beach, we know when it gets crowded, and that's why we're off the beach before it gets crowded. You know, we've tried just to do everything in terms of meeting the standards and providing just good energy at Ditch. I think it's, if you guys take the time to maybe ask around a little bit more, you'll see that this is something that the community does want. There's demand for it, and I think the fabric of Montauk is a surfing and fishing village. And if we're going to cut out the legs of the local, of local, you know, instructors and the businesses that are set up here, you know, we both went through the Montauk Middle School, the East Hampton High School. We love Montauk, and we want to give back, but it's, you know, it's really tough that we're seeing this. It's, you know, a bit heartbreaking, and I really do hope you guys take into consideration, you know, resolution. I just want to put Pat on for a second.
Hey, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Just real quickly, just to reiterate what Mike was saying, you know, for us, really, as we talked about with you last, in last year's meeting and two last previous years meeting Kate and Tom and everyone, you know, we operate our kid surf camp, you know, larger group of kids during the early morning hours of 8 o'clock to 11 o'clock. For beyond that, we're never going to have more than the said 21 in the water that you would mention, Kate. You know, the only time that we would need that 31, as previously agreed on in past years, would be during that camp.